All right, I'd like to welcome everyone. Big crowd today, it's great to see you. Welcome everyone to the April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, thank you. I'm Jeff Benton, President of the Board this year. To my left is our Vice President, fellow Commissioner Gary Merrill. To my right is fellow Commissioner Barb Lewis and our County Administrator Tracy Davies, our Deputy Administrators. I don't see Eric, Dawn Houston and Eric Hostetler is in the next room. And we have clerks today, Sarah Danova and Jennifer Wallraven. So we can begin.
Resolution number two-three dash two-nine-nine in the matter of approving the electronic record of proceedings from regular meeting held April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two-three dash two-nine-nine, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
We don't have public comment at this time, so that brings us to item number three, resolution number two-three dash three-zero-zero in the matter of approving purchase orders and announced certificates and payments of warrants in batch number CM APR zero-four-one-four.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two-three dash three-zero-zero. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two-three dash three-zero-one in the matter of a transfer liquor license from Columbus Zoological Park Association to SSA Group LLC located at nine-nine-nine-zero Riverside Drive, Powell, Ohio, and forwarding to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control with no objections and no requests for hearing.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two-three dash three-zero-one, Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two-three dash three-zero-two in the matter of a transfer liquor license request from Columbus Zoological Park Association Patio and Golf Course to SSA Group LLC, Patio Golf Course located at one-zero-two-four-five Riverside Drive, Powell, Ohio, and forwarding to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control with no objection and no requests for hearing.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two-three dash three-zero-two, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two-three dash three-zero-three in the matter of a transfer liquor license request from Zumbizi Bay LLC to SSA Group LLC located at five-three-five-zero West Powell Road, Powell, Ohio, and forwarding Ohio Division of Liquor Control with no objection and no requests for hearing.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two-three dash three-zero-three, Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two-three dash three-zero-four in the matter of the Board of County Commissioners declaring the week of April twenty-third National Crime Victims Rights Week in Delaware County.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Delaware County Prosecutor Melissa Shiffel, it's wonderful to see you joined with.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Bowles, Chief Deputy for the Sheriff's Office.
Together, as you all know, our offices provide victim advocate services to all of the victims of crime in Delaware County. The Prosecutor's Office provides victim advocate services to those facing the criminal justice process who are victims of felonies. And the Sheriff's Office-
Provides those same services to the folks who go through municipal court.
And so I wanted to share with you just briefly a couple statistics so you understand from the county prosecutor's perspective, in two thousand and twenty-two alone, our victim advocates had more contacts with victims, more than, excuse me, five thousand three hundred contacts with victims of crime in Delaware County. They also accompanied victims more than seven hundred and fifty times to different court proceedings that occurred. As you can tell, victims happen in Delaware County. They live here, they are part of what the fabric of our society, and we're so blessed to have victim advocates to provide those services for them. But that is why next week is so important, is to bring awareness to crime victims and their rights as has been enacted by the general public as a constitutional amendment. So I'd like to bring up our advocates if we could and recognize them for their wonderful work. Trish Wright, Victim Services Director, Megan Pow, Victim Advocate, Nettie Stark, Victim Advocate, and Meg Dillon as well, Victim Advocate. Without these four wonderful ladies, we would be at a loss. So thank you for all that you do. Chief?
Commissioners, as Prosecutor Shiffel said, that the need for services continues. Delaware County is a great county, we talk about this all the time, but yet we still have victims of crime. I spoke with Val Hooper, who's in court this morning with victims, and Val let me know that the cases we've had so far this year have eclipsed all the previous years. Part of it is because we've got multiple victims on a lot of these crimes, and we're just talking about the violent crimes, domestic violence and things related to that. So there's a real need for these services, and I can't stress enough, just like Prosecutor said, what an important role these folks play in the healing process and to shepherd them through the criminal justice system. So we are very thankful to have these folks on our team, and again, thank you for your support, too.
And I'm excited to share an update with you, perhaps, maybe this is the first time you're hearing it, sorry, but due to recent changes in the law enacted by a General Assembly, the Delaware County Prosecutor's Office will now be hosting most of the responsibilities for victims who come through juvenile court. And so we are bringing that aspect of services to our office where before it was wholly hosted by Judge Hemenowski, but the law has changed and we're ready for it. So thank you for all that you do and for your continued support of victims and their rights and our victim advocates. And I believe there's a proclamation.
There is a proclamation. I don't know if we had comments before.
Yeah, oh, you know, we talk about all the things we do right in our county, this is one more of those things that makes us different and unique. And I, when you look around our country, in some, many cases you see victims who are treated in a, like they're with a guilty party in many of our cities and many of our states, and it just reminds us how fortunate we are in Delaware County and State of Ohio. So thank you for all you do. Oh, maybe I'll form one to speak, did we give him a chance?
Sure.
I just want to say, I am really proud of Delaware County. I think we do a really great job, and the one thing that I'm mostly proud of, we all work together, Val, Nettie, my Megan's as I call them, we're all a very tight team, and it makes things a lot easier. And of course, Megan Dillon, who does all of our protection orders and all of our businesses, and sometimes businesses can be, you know, they want some help, too, so I'm proud that we're all a team together.
Thank you. Great, thank you.
Yeah, just like to really thank you. I mean, this is something that is so very necessary in helping people at some of the worst, if not the worst, times in their lives and getting them back so they can, so they can function again, so they can, oh my gosh, continue their lives without, without stress and can't thank you day in and day out. I mean, thank you so much.
Great. If you'll indulge me, I thought I'd go ahead and read the proclamation.
What?
It's gonna take a minute or two, but I think it sums it up very nicely and really does cover the gratitude and the efforts of the group. Proclamation, whereas Delaware County continues its efforts to prevent and respond to crime at every level and will never neglect to show fairness, dignity, and respect to survivors of crime, and will honor them during National Crime Victims Rights Week, April twenty-third through April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. And whereas Delaware County will observe National Crime Victims Rights Week from April twenty-third through April twenty-ninth by placing signs for each township on the lawn of the Delaware County, of the Delaware Historical Courthouse. This display will serve as a powerful reminder that victims are not alone and healing is possible. Later in the summer, the Victims Services Coalition will also partner with Main Street Delaware and law enforcement for a First Friday event on August fourth, two thousand twenty-three. We will be continuing our Walk a Mile in Her Shoes event. That's always, always a fun one, fun to watch, nothing else. The Walk a Mile event raises awareness about sexualized violence towards women. A, and now therefore be it resolved, it is with great respect that the Delaware County Commissioners express their admiration for those survivors of crime who have turned personal tragedies into triumph. As a community, we understand that crime has an impact, and we vow to demonstrate compassion and offer support for those who need it most. To those who serve, our volunteers, law enforcement officers, prosecutors, victim service providers, healthcare professionals, parole and probation officers, counselors, and a host of many others whose dedication serves to victims lessen the trauma and assist in personal recoveries, we offer our deepest gratitude. Further, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners Delaware County that the week of April twenty-third through twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-three is declared National Crime Victims Rights Week in Delaware County, and all citizens of Delaware County are encouraged to use this week to reaffirm their commitment to victims of crime by extending to them respect, understanding, and compassion. Signed, Commissioners Gary Merrill, Commissioner Jeff Benton, and Commissioner Barb Lewis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we gotta, we gotta vote.
Oh, yeah.
We can't assume it's passed until we vote.
Vote on motion two-three dash three-zero-four, Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Would you like to take a picture with the groups?
You know, we love a good picture.
Great. We've got the proclamation here. Jeff Benton?
Item number eight, Alex McCarthy, our new Director of the Delaware County Office of Homeland and Security Emergency Management is here. I will go ahead and I'll read the resolution for number nine as well, and he can start that when he's ready. Resolution number two-three dash three-zero-five in the matter of accepting the Delaware County continuity of operations plan.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Well, good morning, everybody. My name's Alex McCarthy with Delaware County Office of Homeland Security Emergency Management, and I'm happy to be here. I brought with me today J.C. Weber, who's our planner, who's been orchestrating this plan from behind. So J.C., if you'd like to kind of give a brief overview of what we have to offer today.
Thank you, Alex. As he said, my name's J.C. Weber, I'm the Emergency Management Specialist with Delaware County Emergency Management and Homeland Security. Our continuity of operations document for the county is ready for your signature here. It's an update from a previous document, it includes things that we learned from the recent pandemic, including a whole section about telework, as well as different timelines for our different county agencies, with the idea of being a big continuing document to get people up and running with what they need to keep the county running as quickly as possible, what kind of facilities they need, what kind of personnel they need, and have a group already organized to meet those needs as quickly as possible. So if we have a pipe burst in a building and it becomes unoccupable, or we have a larger disaster, we can also meet those needs for our different county agencies and then the public as well.
Other comments? That provides a good overview. We've all, we've all read every single word of the COOP document, I'm sure. It's, but it's a great detailed plan for when emergencies do happen, which is extremely important. Commissioner Lewis, do you have something?
Yeah, yes. If you want to vote for us, we can vote, but then I want Alex to give a little bit of his background.
Vote on motion two-three dash three-zero-five, Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Yeah, welcome, Alex.
Yeah, so I, I'm really excited to be here. I actually started my career in emergency management back in two thousand and fifteen when I started intern under Sean here in Delaware County. After I graduated from Ohio State with an Atmospheric Sciences graduate degree, I spent the last almost six years as the EMA Director for Tuscaloosa County, Ohio, where we had many great experiences and opportunities there, but this is a big step for me, and again, really excited to be here with all of you.
Boy, we're really glad to have you. I mean, you'll, you'll do a great job, and Director Miller did a wonderful job, but we have a great replacement there with, with Alex, and you could share some personal news that happened recently.
Yeah, I also recently got engaged, too, so there's a lot of excitement both on the professional and personal side of my life right now.
All right.
And she lives nearby, doesn't she?
Yes, ma'am. She lives on the Franklin side of the border, but we'll be changing that before too long.
He's also politically correct, isn't he?
That's very, that's very-
Yeah, yeah. J.C., I'd like to thank you, too, for, for all your work on this. You're, you've done a tremendous job for EMA and for us, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Yeah, you've taken over for Sean, who went on to the state. Obviously, we hated to see Sean leave, but he did an outstanding job and left a good team, laid in place, good plans, so coming into a department's in good shape, but I'm sure it'll continue to evolve and do even better.
As a local emergency manager, I'm still excited that we get to work with Sean in his new capacity. He'll be a great advocate for us here at the local level.
Oh, that's, that's great. I do want to thank Scott, who's sitting in the back, for being our intern director, too. You did, you did a great job, too. Thank you.
And the other thing I would add is, I have not met you till today, and, but I've heard nothing but good things, and Commissioner Lewis sort of is on the, that board, so I'm sure she's very involved, but good things I've heard, and you're stepping into big shoes, and, and you're going to be part of a great county.
Thank you, thanks for coming in.
Yep, all right, thank you. So we're good, we voted?
We, you did.
All right, thank you.
Item number ten, resolution number two-three dash three-zero-six in the matter of approving a contract with Garland DBS Incorporated for the Olentangie Environmental Control Center Roofing Project?
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Morning, Commissioners, Tiffany Magg, Director of Environmental Services. So this is a roofing project, it's also for siding, ceiling, and caulking four buildings at our O E C C treatment plant. Total cost of the work is four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, which we did budget for two thousand and twenty-three, and the project will be started this month and be completed by the end of the summer.
Okay. Vote, please.
Vote on motion two-three dash three-zero-six, Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you.
And Tiffany, just one quick question, that, that is our oldest, that's our oldest building?
Or, so it's actually four of the buildings at O E C C that we're, that we're going to be, it's the vehicle storage building, the filter building, which is our largest building on the campus, also the centrifuge building and the North Lower Building. All four of those are some of the oldest buildings on the campus. We've been completing this work over the past few years to kind of go ahead with the budget, you know, doing a few hundred thousand dollars per year, so I believe this is the last year that we'll, we'll need to do any of the exterior work at the, at the plant, and then with the upgrades, we'll basically have a full plant overhaul done.
Okay.
How is the upgrade coming along?
Really well.
I know, we've had it for a few months now.
Yeah, things are going really well, yeah, so we, we're really looking forward to the summer to really get into the meat of the project, but we'll continue to see construction there for the next couple of years.
Yep, big project, important project.
Things are going well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number two-three dash three-zero-seven in the matter of approving the Plattsup subdivision for Keller subdivision lot number two-nine-four, Division One, and Anthony Cad.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners, Lee Bowden, our Administrator for the Engineers' Office. Before you, for your consideration, are two actions. The Keller subdivision is a lot split with total, from a total of two point seven-seven acres into two lots. One is one point three-seven acres, and the other lot is one point three-nine acres, and the property is located off of Sherman Road, which is off of Three Bs and Ks Road in Ashtrude, or, excuse me, in Berlin Township. The, boy, I was really-
Yeah, you were really.
-far north there for a minute. The, I apologize for that. The Anthony Common Access Drive is located off of Three, or, excuse me, Six-O-Five, just south of Thirty-Seven in Trenton Township, and the Common Access Drive will service five lots. These actions have all been reviewed and approved by the required and necessary agencies, and we would humbly recommend your approval.
Okay, comments? Vote, please.
Vote on motion two-three dash three-zero-seven, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two-three dash three-zero-eight in the matter of approving right-of-way work permit summary sheet?
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Five standard utility permits, nothing out of the ordinary to report.
Are they all in Delaware County or Ashtrude?
They are all in Delaware County.
Good, good to know.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And it's the right number, remember, had to launch-
That's right.
It is five.
We tease you, Lee, but that's, we appreciate it.
Well, I deserve it, I do.
All right, Jennifer?
Vote on motion two-three dash three-zero-eight, Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Resolution number two-three dash three-zero-nine in the matter of reappointing members to the Evans Farm New Community Authority Board of Trustees.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Good morning, Commissioners, Jane Hawes, Director of Communications. We have before you a resolution recommending approval to reappoint members to the Evans Farm Board. John Kirksey as our citizen member is interested in being reappointed, and Rob Riley from our Engineers' Office, who serves as the local government representative, is interested in being reappointed, and we recommend their approval.
Okay, comments? Vote, please.
Vote on motion two-three dash three-zero-nine, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number two-three dash three-one-zero in the matter of approving the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four program costs with the County Risk Sharing Authority.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Good morning, Commissioners, Dawn Houston, Deputy Administrator, and I have with me Brian Smith, our local agent with S F M Insurance, and this resolution would approve our costs to participate in the County Risk Sharing Authority for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four program year. We did see an eight percent increase in our overall premiums cost, but that was basically due to market and the increase in our property values overall, so it really is a good renewal. We did see a thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollar credit toward our renewal with all of the loss control efforts that we have participated in, not only under the Board of Commissioners, but the other offices as well. And Brian is here to talk about some of the changes with the course of program for next year, and we can answer any questions that you might have.
Good morning. Not many changes this year. It's been a tough renewal season, I think Commissioner Merrill can attest to that. We did see two small increases in coverage, one for the pollution coverage going from ten thousand to fifty thousand, and then also for Substance One and Two cleanup costs from thirty-five thousand to fifty thousand. The biggest difference is that last year we had four million dollars worth of cyberliability coverage. Due to the market conditions out there, that has been reduced to two million. So we do have two million included in our policy, but we're working with Dawn and her team with a couple of options in the event that she would like to choose some additional coverages to get us back up to that four, or take it to six million.
Now, we actually received quotes from another company on Thursday of last week, so we haven't really had significant time to look into what those coverages would entail and then the overall additional cost for that. You know, I do believe that we have a very good cybersecurity program in place. Our Auditor's Office and I T departments do a very good job with making sure that our system is secure, so that's another conversation that we'll be having with Auditor Keita and Director Lewis this week, and coming back to you to let you know what our recommendation will be.
Yeah, that's one of the big returns we have in local governments is data, data and technology security. There've been some very notable hackings that have caused a lot of problems and cost a lot. So good, good to know that we're exploring enhancing that coverage. Other comments?
Just thank you, Brian, for your work on this, and Dawn, of course, you've done a great job, good coverage. I'll let Commissioner Merrill, please, on the board.
Yeah, I'm privileged to serve on the board, and a lot of time went into trying to determine how we're going to price this year, and of course, each county is a little different, and I believe our average is around ten percent, and we're below that, and it says a lot about the stewardship in our county. And as you know, we've done a lot of expansion, and some of it may have been in the previous year, but regardless, to have an eight and a half percent roughly increase is really a good position to be in. And as far as the hacking issue, there's going to be some additional evaluation of that over the next year. We've all got to do is a better job because the bad guys are doing a better job, and there's going to be a lot more to be said about that, and I've had conversations with George Keita and Dusty, and we'll be working on that as well, so, but great shape, coming where we came in is really fantastic.
Yes, it is. I would also like to thank Anessa Hill with S F M Insurance and Cindy Haring, our insurance coordinator, both of them do a great job with pulling together all the details for the renewal, and it takes a great deal of time getting in contact with the other offices and departments and making sure that we've got everything in place to ensure proper coverage should we need to file a claim.
Okay. No further comments, we'll take a vote.
Vote on motion two-three dash three-one-zero, Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Dawn, thanks, Bren.
We have a few minutes before we can act on number item fifteen, so we can cover Administrator reports.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Tracy?
I don't have anything other than to talk about our next item when we're ready.
I don't have anything either.
Well, we may have to look on this, does-
All right.
Pressure's four minutes. Commissioner Lewis?
Oh, my gosh.
Pressure's on.
I know, and I can't think of anything.
All right, Commissioner Merrill.
Well, I'll-
Somebody's got to have one this-
Somebody's got to call for something.
I'll try to kill a couple minutes here. Commissioner Ben's always congratulatory towards the softball team at the University of Oklahoma.
Oh.
But what he probably is not aware of, the ladies gymnastics team won their sixth national championship in the last nine years, so they're the equal of the softball program, so I know you were, you were probably aware of that, because I know you follow closely.
Does Oklahoma play any men's sports?
You've got to be careful with those kind of comments, I'll leave it at that. The only other thing I have is C C O Board meets Wednesday afternoon, and after that's the legislative meeting, which I know all are invited to, and I'll leave it up to you, Commissioner Ben, to fill the next two minutes.
All right, we got, we got two minutes to cover. There was a little reception on Friday afternoon out at the fairgrounds, it was extremely well-attended. We won't, we won't cover a whole lot of that just yet, but that was a great event.
That's right.
Great, great event, a lot of fun, very well-attended, and a lot of really neat comments. Got a one Delaware luncheon Wednesday at Ohio Wesleyan, groups trying to advance Delaware economic development and doing a lot of good things. The O C C O, C C O reception at the State House tomorrow night, the White Gun is having their ribbon cutting on their expanded facility on Thursday, and that's, you know, just a great employer for Delaware County, they're, they're committed to Delaware County with their, their expansion, and we're just delighted to see them officially open their, their new facility. I think that's about it, got a minute to go. Anybody want to?
Oh, gosh, let's see.
Who watched the golf tournament over the weekend? Anybody watch the golf tournament? It's a three-hole playoff, very exciting.
I watched some of the playoffs, but I didn't see actually-
Matt Fitzpatrick beat Jordan Spieth in a playoff.
Was he the one that hit that, like, unreal shot where it came into the hole?
Didn't see that. They all hit unreal shots, from a golfer, they're, they're, they are way better than anybody around, so.
Yeah, let's see, it seems like something else happened after that event on last week that was so well-attended, but I can't think of it. Yeah, but that, that was a great event, though.
Yeah, that was, that was outstanding.
Well, I do have one other thing I could share, and you were talking about softball a while ago, and- And.
Who was?
The University of Oklahoma made their first trip into our state over the weekend. And they, they beat the Miami team by 13 to 1.
Oh, they didn't get run rule.
13 to 1 is a run rule.
Oh, they did get run rule. That's my alma mater.
That's your alma mater.
Wasn't a good weekend for, for softball.
Yeah, there was a football game in the stadium too.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah.
I think we're ready, Jennifer.
Okay, well, for item number 15, I need a motion from the Board to appoint an acting sheriff for Delaware County.
Well, Commissioners first, I'll, I'll add, Tracy Davies, County Administrator. The Board of Commissioners have received a notice of retirement from our outstanding Sheriff Russell L. Martin, effective today, April 17th, 2023, at 10:00 a.m. Before you, for your consideration, is a resolution appointing an acting sheriff.
Okay. We are ready to do the resolution if we can get a name from.
We are record.
How?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes, I would like to appoint Jeff Balzer as our, as acting sheriff for Delaware County.
And I would second that.
All right. I'll go ahead and vote, then we can have remarks.
Resolution number two, three dash three one one. In the matter of appointing Jeff Balzer, acting sheriff for Delaware County. Motioned by Commissioner Lewis, seconded by Commissioner Merrill. Vote on motion two, three dash three one one. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
All right. Congratulations. I, I do have an oath of office, should we do that first? Is it?
Yes, go ahead and do the oath.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do the oath of office, if you would, please.
I want to be able to hear in the mic.
Ready? Raise your right hand. I'm going to minister an oath of office to acting sheriff Jeff Balzer. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jeffrey Steve Balzer.
Being duly sworn?
Being duly sworn.
That state that I will support?
State that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and impartially?
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all duties?
Discharge and perform all duties.
And coming upon me?
Coming upon me.
As acting sheriff of Delaware County?
As acting sheriff of Delaware County.
State of Ohio?
State of Ohio.
To which said office?
To which said office.
I have been appointed?
I have been appointed.
According to the best?
According to the best.
My ability and understanding?
My ability and understanding.
So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I just want to make a real brief statement. I am honored by the confidence you've shown in me. I'm truly honored. I'm thankful for the ability, the opportunity to work with Sheriff Martin and to learn from Sheriff Martin. And I look forward to continuing to serve the citizens of Delaware County. That's it. It's short but sweet this one.
All right. Who wants to go first? We got some, some good things to say.
The time I've had to become a queen with now Chief Balzer, I, it's been fantastic. I turn it around for your benefit, for your benefit. Thank you. Thank you, you're a good administrator. That's right. We, I think, we make the appointment. And I think just for clarity for everybody's benefit, the Central Committee will meet in the month of May. I don't recall the date off the top of my head.
May 11th. It's stamped in my mind.
You had that in plan. And they will ultimately make the appointment to the remainder of the term. And that'll be done on that date. But this is an interim appointment. Obviously, it shows the confidence the Commissioners have in appointing. And we look forward to working with you during this time and hopefully beyond that. And again, that'll be up to Central Committee. I'm not going to go into your long list of things that you've accomplished. I think that may be more appropriate once Central Committee makes their decision. But I just want to say congratulations and welcome. And we know we're in good, good shape during this interim period and probably beyond that. Thank you, God bless you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Well, I've had the opportunity to work with Sheriff Balzer for a few years now through the stepping up program and other fine programs that you have over at the jail. And it's, it's just been a pleasure to work with you. And I'm so looking forward to continuing that work and with your excellent team. I mean, you have, you have worked hand in glove with, with Sheriff Martin over the years. And first, first got to know him, I believe, when you both served in Delaware City Police Department. And so there's a long history. You and Amy have raised your, your kids here. And you, you're, you, you really are invested in the community through, through your presence here. And then through the police department. And then you went on to, to serve in the U.S. Marshals Office and, which you did stellar work there. And fortunately, you were beckoned back here by mutual agreement with Sheriff Martin and, and yourself to, to, to really serve the community then. And I, I know that was a big step for you. And you've done such a terrific job here in, in the interim. So I know you're going to continue the great work that you've already done with Sheriff Martin. And we, we are in very safe hands here in Delaware County. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, and just to add a little bit to it, one of the most important, if not the most important thing that we as Commissioners have responsibility for is to make, make sure our citizens are safe. And Sheriff Martin set the bar pretty high, put together an outstanding team, and, you know, created an, an office that does exactly that. You know, we probably have the best Sheriff's Department in the state of Ohio, if not the country. And that was very clear from the retirement party we had Friday. Just all the county sheriffs that were there and other law enforcement officials and leaders. And they just were, just went on and on about how well-run, well-respected, and what a great job our office does. And, and want to thank Sheriff Martin and his, his wife Jill, who made, made that possible, you know, for, for us to be there for so long. But again, thanks, thanks to you, thanks to Sheriff Martin for his confidence in you and, you know, the whole team. Again, it's got, we've got a great team in the office. And it's a very well-respected department, their office. And we're, we're thrilled to have you lead it through into May and, and hopefully beyond. So we will, I guess that's about it.
We do have one public comment.
Oh yeah, yeah.
We also have a public comment.
Oh, we do have a public comment too.
Could I also add real quick? I just want to thank Amy, my wife, for everything.
Yes, and Amy too.
My son and Nick is here also. My daughter Julie is in Seattle, but I think she's streaming it live right now.
All right, all right.
All the men and women of the Sheriff's Office for their support. So thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Amy, did you want to say anything? Well, I wanted to give you an opportunity, so it's not a requirement. So again, and, and we all know Amy and Jill have been huge supporters of, of this very important office. And very, very, very critical to have that support. Sheriff Martin, or past Sheriff Martin?
Well, I'm no longer the sheriff. I probably got something to say. It, it'll be short. It can't be overstated, the politically courageous appointment that you've made today. It would have been easy to quote, "set on the fence," end quote, and appoint somebody who's not interested in this process. But this team behind me has worked too hard over the last 11 years and turned the office around collectively. And this is the right person for the right time. And I just personally want to thank you because I'm confident that what we've collectively accomplished will continue to move forward. And that's the best way to leave this office in the right hands. So I personally want to thank this Board for being courageous today. I'm thankful that Jeff had an interest in this. And what a great opportunity it's been to serve this great county. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Well, we wanted to, we, I think Tom Holland from the city of Delaware has, has a request to speak. I'm sure it'll be complimentary to Sheriff Martin and new Sheriff Balzer.
Thank you, Board of County Commissioners. And I want to first congratulate Intram Sheriff Balzer for this appointment. And I wish him all the best in the next, the next coming months as he begins his, the next chapter of his law enforcement career. I wanted to build on a number of the comments that were made last week at the retirement party. Obviously, it was a pleasure to serve with Russ Martin during his tenure as Chief of Police in Delaware. The selection of a police chief is a city manager's single most important appointment. The right leader can make all the difference, not just in crisis situations, but in the daily test of working closely with others to keep citizens safe. It was my very good fortune to work with that kind of leader in Russ Martin. He has dedicated his life to public service, public safety, and his commitment to our community is unmatched. So on behalf of the Council, the community, and myself, I want to congratulate Russ for his outstanding career as a law enforcement professional. He's led with integrity, dedication, and he has left this county, this community, in great shape. And I guess one of the things, the last thing I'll say is, this has been a smooth transition. They've not always been this way. And this reflects on his professionalism, the professionalism of this Board and the county. So thank you very much and congratulations, Russ Martin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
Yeah, that's an important comment. Just like with EMA, when Sean Miller left, you know, we had a great plan in place, a great team. And the transition has gone smoothly. Same, same here, you know, with the office being transitioned to now Sheriff Balzer from Sheriff Martin. And again, that, that's, that takes a lot of teamwork. A whole great group of people, you know, working with the sheriff. And we've had a great partnership and we intend to continue that. So we really appreciate it. I don't know if anybody else had any comments? Chief Snowden? Vance? Anybody else want to say anything?
I already said mine.
Okay, all right. We're good.
I just want to say one thing. I, I just want to thank Deputy Darren, who is always with us. And he's, he keeps us, he keeps us safe. I don't know if. He's, he's outside, yeah. Yeah, guarding. Yeah, yeah. But thanks to him too.